Welcome, everybody, to the Zone and Board Meeting of June 22nd, 2021. My name is Marty Aitken, as the Chairman. Board members, we have Mr. Chin, Mr. O'Brien, Mr. Himmel. Is Mr. Ray Dell with us? Brian, you want to?
Yeah, I am.
All right. Mr. Frankel, are you here?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. Okay. If... Take a motion, please, Mr. Chin, to waive the minutes of June 8th, please.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to waive the reading of the minutes from the previous meeting. Second.
On the motion, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
So move. We have three that are going to move right now. Case number ZB-2115, they want to... I got a letter here from a lawyer, they want to move it to the 21st, at 651 C Street.
July 13th.
I'm sorry, July 13th. What did I say?
It said the 21st.
Oh. July 13th. By your motion, please.
Mr. Chairman, regarding case number ZB-21-ZBA-21-15, Virtual Capital Group LLC for a special permit, floodplain variance to remove the existing single-family house and construct a new side-by-side duplex-style building on the premises numbered 651 C Street, I make a motion to move this until July 13th.
Second.
On the motion, seeing none, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? So move. Case number ZB-2118, Flatley Company, One Crown Drive, July 13th, please.
Mr. Chairman, regarding case ZB-21-18, John Flatley Company for a variance to construct a center mount, old billboard sign on the premises numbered One Colony, Crown Colony Drive, I make a motion to allow the case to be moved to July 13th.
Second.
On the motion, seeing none, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? So move. Case number ZB-2136, 599 C Street, July 13th, please.
Mr. Chairman, regarding case 21-36, Virtual Capital Group LLC for a variance, special permit, floodplain, to construct a new side-by-side duplex-style building with a garage parking on the premises numbered 599 C Street, Quincy, I make a motion to move the meeting, move the case until July 13th.
Second.
On the motion, seeing none, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Back to old business, case number ZB-219, Jim Chin for variance direct, two units, two-and-a-half story townhouse addition to the existing single-family structure on the premises 23 The Tall Street. The applicant and the representative here.
Yes, Jim.
Go ahead, unmute yourself if you're here.
Jimmy?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman.
First of all, first of all, we were supposed to get a new set of plans, we never got.
That's correct, and we would like to withdraw this current application and will resubmit in a future date with a different proposal.
Okay, withdraw without prejudice. Could I have a motion, please, Mr. O'Brien?
Mr. Chairman, regarding ZB-A case 21-9, Jim Chin for a variance to erect a two-unit, two-and-a-half-story townhouse addition to an existing single-family structure on the premises numbered 23 Boltoff Street in Quincy, I make a motion to allow the case to be withdrawn without prejudice.
Second.
On the motion, seeing none, can we... Oh, yeah. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So move. We had one more, right? I thought there was just one I wanted. Is Margaret La Forest here? Are you online, Margaret?
I don't see her in the participants.
Okay, we'll just move on. Under old business, case number ZB-2084, Herbert and Whistle for a variance to renovate and expand a single-family home and construct loft area, a kitchenette and bath, detached garage on the premise 11 Bayberry Road. The applicant and representative here, did everyone get a new set of plans in the mail?
No.
No.
No?
Hi, Mr. Chairman, many is Peter Bartash and that representative.
Hold on, Peter, hold on. Jimmy, you never... I mean, Mr. Himmel, you never got yours?
I didn't.
I didn't either.
And Mr. O'Brien, anyone else?
I recall getting one.
I don't either.
Let me just see the difference. I know he's moved all the... Everything we've asked him, he's moved. And it's up to you guys, we'll have to get them out again if you don't have them, but if you want him... Those two guys, is it okay if he goes through a set of plans in front of you? They're the same... It's the same structure, except for the thing on top, but what they're doing is they're taking the electrical out, I mean, the water out of the garage. There's not going to be a toilet there.
Mr. Chairman, we also... We did submit 14 copies of the revised plans.
I know you did, and I know they went out, I got mine, I just... I can't blame the pork, the pork's out, but the mail sometimes. So, are you two guys all right with that? If we look at the plans with the changes, we can go through them?
Yeah. Yeah, I'm fine being.
Okay. You have the floor, Peter, go ahead.
Thank you very much, everyone. Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. My name, for the record, is Peter Bartash, I'm the architect for the project representing Herbert and Whistle. I'm going to go ahead and share my screen and just walk through some revisions to the plans that we've made. So, just to recap for the board, I know it's been a little while since we looked at this together. It's an existing single-family home at 11 Bayberry Road that does have its own standalone garage. This is a long-term resident with a desire to create a forever home at this location. It's a proposed expansion of the existing house footprint and modification to its roof line. It's also a proposed renovation of the existing garage. Our objectives in this project are to maintain the existing coastal New England design aesthetic, to utilize efficient planning and design to minimize overall magnitude of proposed alterations to the existing structures, and also to maintain an appropriate visual scale that's consistent with the neighborhood context. So at our first meeting, we heard very clearly a request from the ZBA to eliminate the tower above the existing roof line, to reduce the length of the dormers to approximately 50% of the roof length, and also to eliminate the kitchenette and bathroom from the garage. We have completed all three of those requests, and what I'm going to do is walk through plans and a few elevations perspectives to demonstrate the changes to the project. So first, we'll start by looking at the main structure, which is the actual residence itself. Here, we're looking at the basement, the change that we made to the basement, which is per the ZBA's recommendation in our conversation at that first hearing, is that we've introduced a half bathroom with a toilet and a sink in the basement of the existing home for use by pool guests who can come in and out of a walkout door here on the northeast corner of the basement, and that bathroom is no longer in the garage. There's no longer a full bathroom in the garage, which we'll see in a second. As we move up to the second floor plan here, you'll note that the only real change we have is that we've removed the bump out, which was part of the design for the tower that sat on top of the structure, so that's gone. It's the same change is also true of the third floor, and you'll note, as I'm about to show you in the roof plan, that we've pulled the length of the new dormer on the northeastern side of the roof back by close to seven feet, so it's now approximately 57% of the roof length. So we've taken that and tightened that up as much as we possibly could to meet that charge of trying to get to 50% of the roof length for that dormer area. So this was the previous roof plan, which had a dormer along, you know, 95% of the existing roof, and you can see in the new plan, it's been peeled all the way back. We did introduce a skylight just to maintain those existing... those views back toward the city of Boston, but I think it's important to reiterate to the board as well that this is not... It's not really new space at the third floor we're creating here, there is currently a walk-up attic in this location with full height, full ceiling height in this location. By introducing this dormer, we're just making that space slightly more functional as part of the owner's plans for the renovations to the house. So here's the revised building section, you can see that we've removed the tower that we used to have in the sort of background of the distance there. So these are the previous elevations where you see the length of the dormer along the northeastern side of the roof as well as the tower, and in the new condition, you can see that we've pulled that dormer back from the front of the house and completely eliminated that tower condition. We've also brought down the height of the chimney to the rear as well, too. So here's the other two elevations, and again, this is a before, and this is an after, following the ZBA's charge to really reduce and manage the scale of the proposed renovations. And here, we'll look quickly at the proposed changes to the actual garage structure itself, which is closer to the street.
I still got a question on the other house, first of all, one. What size is the other dormer on the other side? That's smaller, correct?
That... You're talking about the dormer on the other side of the roof? It's about two feet longer than the other dormer on the other side, but it's still within 60, you know, 60% of the total length of the roof here, right here.
Well, we told you to keep it at 50. I mean, now you're doing 57 on the other side and 60 on this side. You know, it's almost the full length, which we didn't want to show a whole third floor.
So...
You're up on the mark, this.
So, again, Mr. Chair, this plan on this floor is... This is existing space up here, I mean, ultimately...
Without the dorms, it doesn't work, so... I know what you're trying to do, but usually what we try to do is take the dorm and split them up, like, whatever, eight, 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 or whatever, just make it a design look instead of a third floor look, is what we try to keep. But, go ahead, continue.
So, as we keep moving forward here through the remainder of the changes, you'll note that we've eliminated the second stair from within the garage, we've also eliminated the kitchen and the bathroom from within the garage.
Yeah.
And so you can see that we've eliminated that other divider wall as well and just introduced a storage room with the loft area here. So here, we're just going to go through, these are the elevation changes to the garage as well, which are, you know, just unchanged from what we looked at before. I'm going to flip past the context quickly and just note that here, you know, here are several surrounding projects that far exceed the scale and magnitude of the proposed renovations to this existing structure.
That's then, and this is now, I know.
And we agree, we totally agree, but we think it's important to recognize that this is not a significant request for the changes to this existing structure, it's also not a for-profit project, this is specifically for the homeowner's use.
I get it, right?
So when we look at...
It's a beautiful house, you're right.
This is the existing location here today, and this is that home that sits right next door behind the other adjacent lot.
And you're going to tell me that third floor that you have there is close to what you're putting on?
That's correct, the stair comes up to the corner through here, there's existing dorm here.
I'm just saying, you know, I mean, you are getting relief, look at the size of those dorms, they are pretty big.
We understand that, we understand, you know, and this is the proposed view of what it would be.
Yeah.
So then, this is just a view from the front of the project, just, again, just showing how that project would appear from the street. So, I think with that being said, you know, we've definitely worked on the plan.
I've asked them to do what the board has, and I know the dorm is a little bigger than I like them, but, you know, you took off the castle up on the fourth floor and you brought it down, it's going to be a beautiful home, it's a gorgeous home. I don't have any questions right now. Mr. O'Brien?
No, I have no questions, but I'd like to apologize, I did receive the set of plans, I just misplaced them.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. No, that's just a mailman, sometimes he goes to the neighbor. Mr. Chin?
It looks pretty big from the back looking up, I understand it's an elevation issue, it looks like four floors over there from the backside because of the slope of the lot, I get that. I would like to hear from the neighbors and see whether there is any opposition and what it's based upon.
Sure. Mr. Ray Dell?
I apologize, I wasn't here for the first meeting in this.
But it's a new house, so you could sit in it, because...
Yeah, no, 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 I'm just wondering, there's no occupancy of the second structure, right? It's like a pool house and a garage, right?
No, no, it's just the garage with a little loft they're going to put in there, they took out the sink, they took out the toilet.
Okay, that's all I had.
Yeah.
That's all.
Mr. Himmel?
I don't mind a little bit larger than 50% in the dorm, it's a beautiful project, and I just want to absolutely make sure we have no water to that garage.
Yeah. He said there wouldn't be, so we're good, I guess, we can put that in there. All right. Is there anyone that wants to speak in favor? First, in favor, can we get rid of the screen somehow, yeah?
Yeah, I'll do that right now, there we go.
Thank you. Anyone to speak in favor? First call? Second call, wave 69, what is it? Star 6769?
Star 9.
Star 9.
Star 9, if you're on a cell...
Stop, stop.
If you're on a cell phone, star 9, if you're in the participants list or reactions along the bottom of your screen, you should have an option to do the virtual hand raise, otherwise turn screen.
Third call, that part of hearing closed, anything new from the...
No new.
Okay. Put that old letter in. Is there anyone opposed or undecided? First call? Anybody?
Citizen Rotifell.
Citizen Rotifell. You're up, I got to take Mr. Chin, could you please give him a note?
Yes, Mr. Rotifell, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in the matter now in hearing?
I do. John Rotifell, 62 Grandwall Road. My question is this, is that the... What's the square footage of the garage?
John, the only thing they get there is a little dorm for the loft area, it's... The only thing they use in is like the second floor of it, or a little teeny loft, if you saw the plans when they came up.
Well, I mean, I'm just saying that we always talk about, like, we know, let's say if the current occupant is saying they're going to live there, we don't know what the next occupant's going to do, and all I'm saying, you know, even if someone isn't sleeping there, it might be even worse if someone's just hanging there all the time and there's a whole bunch of people hanging outside that, you know, it just... It could become a nuisance for the neighborhood, and it's just... It's just un... I just have a problem because it's too close to the street, you know, so it's like, it's, you know, other than the garage part, I think the house part, it looks like it's a house war with the people behind them, they built a big house, they're building one back, that's what happens when someone builds a big house, you have the right to build a big house right back, that's why you have property rights, but the garage, I don't really think you have the rights to do that there, so I'm split, thank you.
All right, thank you, John, is there anyone else? Undecided or against? Second call? Third call? Call of party hearing closed. I think it's a beautiful house, and he did everything that I've asked on the dorms, though, like even John says, you know, it's a beautiful house, and he's putting a ton of money in there, and it really... I'm going to vote in favor, it's a beautiful home. Mr. O'Brien? Can't hear you. You muted? Charlie muted? How's Charlie muted? Charlie, you muted?
I'm not now.
Okay, bud.
Yeah, I think he, within reasonableness, he came down to what we were looking for, so I'll be voting in favor.
Thank you. Mr. Chin?
Yeah, I agree with Charlie, I think the modifications were reasonable, they went to the point, and as long as we have a restriction on the living in the garage space, then I'm in favor of the project.
Very good. Mr. Ray Dell?
In favor.
Mr. Himmel?
I'm in favor, he did what we asked, and you're right, as long as we put the restricted living space in the garage, I'm for it.
Okay, can we have a motion, please, Mr. O'Brien?
Mr. Chairman, regarding case number 20-84, Herbert and Whistle for a variance to renovate and expand a single-family home and construct a loft area with a kitchenette and a bath, which is no longer permitted, to the detached garage on the premises numbered 11 Bayberry Road, I make a motion to grant the requested variance, subject to the conditions that there'll be no plumbing in the garage and there'll be no occupancy.
Is that seconded?
Second.
Second. On the motion, seeing none, Madam Clerk, can we take a roll call vote?
Charlie O'Brien?
Yes.
Russell Chin?
Yes.
John Himmel?
Yes.
Brian Redell?
Yes.
Marty Aitken?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Peter.
Thank you very much, everyone, have a good night.
Nice job. Further into tonight's agenda, Robert Peniman, for variance to remove the existing masonry stairs and replace it with a seven-by-16 deck and stairs on the premise 11 Fairchild. Is the applicant and the representative here?
I am here, Mr. Chairman.
All right, you have the floor. Are you a lawyer?
No.
No, okay.
I'm the builder, actually.
Oh, the builder, there you go. Mr. Chin, could you swear, man, please?
Yes, Mr. Peniman, do you swear to tell the truth, and nothing but the truth in the matter now in hearing?
I do.
Thank you.
You have the floor.
So, this goes back probably almost pre-pandemic, we had submitted an application, a building application, two separate ones, actually, one for siding, siding and windows, and then the customer had requested that we replace a set of masonry stairs on the side of the house with a seven-by-16 deck. During the pandemic, Mr. McCarthy, Inspector McCarthy, was out due to an injury, and the permit had just kind of lingered in the system, and I had sent out a request, you know, just kind of checking what the status of the permit application was, and the permit actually got issued. So we went ahead and removed the masonry steps, we poured the sauna tubes, we framed to the deck, and in the interim, I had some discussions with Mr. McCarthy, he had requested that he was able to come and view the frame of the deck prior to us putting the decking surface on, so that he didn't have to get under it or anything else because he had injured his ribs.
Yep.
So at the time when he came to the site to do that inspection, he realized that the setback on the side was significantly under the requirement. So, you know, we're kind of trying to retroactively, you know, move back and make this compliant, acquire the variance to continue on and finish that deck. It does, that exit, that door off the side of the house functions as the second egress, so the homeowner has been basically without the second egress since October.
He didn't give him a rope?
Well, he can walk the joist if he's that good, so...
They had to get out, right.
But, you know, it was just, it was just one of those things that it was, you know, with Mr. McCarthy being out and the pandemic going on and everything else, it just fell through the cracks.
Any questions at the board? I have no questions.
I have no question, no questions.
Mr. Chin? Mr. Ray Dell?
No questions.
Mr. Himmel?
No questions, I've seen the work they've done, the place looks great, so no questions.
Thank you.
Is there anyone who wants to speak in favor? First call? Second call? Anyone?
No hands.
Third call, call of party hearing closed, I have a letter here from the BW, we reviewed this middle of your buffer from the project and have no comments. Is there anyone opposed or undecided? Anyone opposed or undecided in this matter? Second call? Third call, call of party hearing closed, I'll be voting in favor. Mr. O'Brien, comments?
Likewise, no comment.
Mr. Chin?
No comments, I'm in favor.
And Mr. Ray Dell?
I'm in favor.
And Mr. Himmel?
No comments, I'm in favor.
Grab the motion, please.
Mr. Chairman, regarding case number 20-82, Robert Peniman, for a variance to remove the existing masonry stairs and replace it with a new seven-foot by 16-foot deck with stairs on the premises numbered 11 Fairchild Street in Quincy, I make a motion to grant the requested variance.
Second.
On the motion, seeing none, Madam Clerk, can we get a voice vote, please?
Yes. Charlie O'Brien?
Yes, sir.
Russell Chin?
Yes.
John Himmel?
Yes.
Brian Redell?
Yes.
Marty Aitken?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
I know it wasn't easy, but, there you go, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, gentlemen.
We're going to... I want to... The council, well, the council's here, and I want to... He's got probably things to do, too, he's been really, really busy. Council McCarthy. 108 Pontiac Road, I know we put that off so you could do what you needed to do.
If I could speak, Mr. Chairman, thank you. I visited the McGoldies who live next door to the Jacobs who are doing the work, I think they're both on tonight. I met with the Jacobs family over on 108, that is, they're the folks that are proposing the addition, and I was hoping that Mr. Jacobs would, you know, when he comes on or have his representative on, would talk a little bit more after they talk about what they're proposing about the property line. Property line's kind of a crazy line, it starts out wide and goes right in close to the McGoldie's house, and the Jacobs were... They were nice enough to want to make sure that this works for both houses, so both families are, I think, definitely going to be here for a long time in Marymount, and I was just trying to make sure that maybe we could come to an agreement, the Jacobs seemed to be very willing to try to make this all work for both sides, so I'll let it go, you guys can talk about it a little bit, and then if I have to jump back in, but I'm hoping there's a little compromise on the property line itself and a little relief that I think would make both bodies happy, so with that, Mr. Chairman, I'll let you go through the 108 Pontiac proposal.
Thank you, and what I was looking at is, it looks like that the other guy's house is on the other guy's property, now, according to this, the applicant and the representative here?
Yes.
All right.
Applicants here.
Do you want to get Swan in? Mr. Chin?
Yes, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in the matter now in hearing, Mr. Jacobs?
Yes, I do, sir.
Thank you.
You have the floor, and I just wanted to, to the way this property line goes, it almost looks like, when I'm looking at the other record, it's not on this, why it isn't, I don't know, but...
If I may, I can share the screen with you and with the audience.
You have it.
So we can look at what we're proposing. So first of all, just like to share the screen of the assessors' map, this is the locus, the site is intersection of Pontiac Road and Swanton Road, as is a somewhat rectangular, it's a little rectangular, because it's wide on the Swanton Road, it's narrow down to the... It's narrowed down.
When you, hold up one second. Hold up. You're breaking up here. I don't know what's going on with that. Is it us? Jonathan, is it us?
No, that would be on his end. It's got to be a Wi-Fi or some sort of issue.
Do you hear me now?
Yep, go ahead.
Do you hear me now? Okay, so again, this is the locus of the area. Subject property is highlighted at the intersection of Squanto Row and Pontiac Row. As you can see, the lot is a little irregular shape. Wider on the Squanto Row side, it's narrowed down a little bit towards the southern lot line. And we can zoom in right into the plot prints here. What we are proposing is to, the site has an existing building with a three-bedroom, one-half bath, about, let's see, about 1,200 square foot of living area presently. And has a detached one-car garage and the driveway on the south side of the building. What we are proposing is to demolish the existing building, which is actually very close to the lot line here and on the west side. Only 2.8 feet setback. And we are proposing a 20 by 24 additions with a breezeway connecting. So, it will be two-car garage under and a family room and a master bedroom. It's going to be a two-story building, two-story additions. I can share with you, this is the existing floorprints. And the elevations looking from the front of this Pontiac Row, the praying white-sized existing building and the side with the hatch on is the proposed additions. So, you can see we are matching the height of the building. It's simply just bumping out on the side and connecting with the two-car garage, living room.
Why do you have two front doors on that?
There's a side door here. It's, this is the existing front door. This is a side door coming up from the garage side.
Missing something. Go ahead. Great, keep going.
So, let me go back to the the floorprints. You can see the door better. So, the front door is going to remain. And where the garage coming up with a staircase is a side door. The elevation doesn't see the, you know, the depth of the building.
I know it's behind it, but it looks like it's got two front doors. It almost looks like two buildings.
Yeah, it's just the elevation does not see the, you know, the,
Yep, okay. Go ahead.
and I have some photo exhibit of the existing building, as you can see from the front of Pontiac Row. And this is the side view on the intersections. And the view from Squanto Row. And this is a side where the existing garage is going to be demolished and connect with the breezeway and a two-car garage. Pretty much at the location.
Why are you having a breezeway?
Just to connect the two buildings together.
I thought you were going right up to the building. I thought you, this whole thing was connected.
Well, it is connected. I call it breezeway, but it's really the corridor between the two connected buildings. Because we do have a two-car garage. It's a different elevation. It's going deeper to get to the basement level. So, we need a separation between the two basements.
Yep.
So, the garage, the building is connected in the rear part. And this is the neighbor on the left-hand side on Pontiac Row. And I believe the property line, his lot is pretty close to the property line. And back to the site print, and you can see we have, we have proposed 15.1 feet of side yard setback. So, what we are asking for, for relief is the side yard setback from the way of the building, where we have 7.6 feet. And we can compare that to the existing garage. It's only 2.8. And yeah.
I see what you're building, but to me, it's like, it looks like you have, when you walk in here, you got a family room on the left. You go left, you got a family room, correct? Go up a few stairs and you're in the family room, correct?
Yes.
Right. And then you can go to the right. And then you got to go upstairs. So, the only way to get upstairs, you're saying, is the main house?
The main house, the existing house, we give the stair to go up to the bedroom?
Right, to the bedrooms. The only way to get upstairs is from the old house. I don't see another set of stairs here, do you? I don't.
From the old house, yes.
From the old house, right.
Come upstairs, you're in the second floor.
Right, and you got to come across.
No, you can shut this off.
Yeah, and you got two houses. Right.
Basically, you just come across here.
Yeah, I don't like the whole thing like that. There's no room. You know.
It comes to comments.
In common, one second. In common, not a three-foot walkway. You want it in common. You want this place to open.
Right.
That's what I'm saying. The way this is designed, I'm looking at it, it looks like you got, you put up one door and you could have two houses there. You do. But you still need a set of stairs to get up there. No, you could put them up. Five minutes, right.
Comment stairs.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, and then shut it off, right. So, I don't, go ahead. Go through what you're going to go through. I'm just telling you what we're looking at here. And that's what I keep saying. You got to come up there, but then you shut off the three foot six into the master bedroom and a set of stairs and you got two homes, so. Now, when you build these, they're supposed to be in common. It's one house. It's supposed to have a flow. The only thing flowing here is a three-foot-six alley. Which could turn this into two homes. So, that's just me. Go ahead, continue. I'm just saying what, I just don't like it. But go ahead, finish, finish, please.
Yeah, I mean, that's basically the presentations. And I mean, the homeowner is here as well. And if you'd like to speak on, he worked with the architect directly, so he can speak a little bit on the architectural design. But it's just, it's keeping the existing house, so it's adding on would be a little challenge to keep.
No, you're not. No, you're not, because you just make it bigger. When you're connecting the other house, you make a bigger opening. You make a nice six-foot-wide open and see, you can get in there. It's all in common. No one's going to put up a door or that. This is just, to me, that could be changed. And I'm not saying the homeowner's going to do that. The next homeowner is going to put a door up and have two rentals, so.
Okay, and Mr. Jacobs, the homeowner, is actually here. He's at the end raise. Would like to speak about the design a little bit.
Well.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If I can just comment a little bit. So, just to give you some background, we're a family of four. We have two children, eight and two years old. We moved here in 2013. And we plan to live here for decades to come. There's not going to be another homeowner here for probably our lifetimes. To explain the reason why the setup is the way it is, you know, we're not with unlimited amounts of cash. So, the wall that faces the other property is actually our kitchen, it's our kitchen wall. And so, we have a kitchen countertop there, our appliances, plumbing, sink. It would cost a significant amount of more money to tear that wall down and go out the whole six-foot or eight-foot range that you're talking about. So, what we do is we,
You got a 50-foot house. I can't see why it wouldn't be like, why you couldn't make that just flow better than that. I personally don't like it at all.
I think there might be some misunderstanding about how it flows. So, it's not just a breezeway. It's a fully connected hallway. It's going to be, on the first level,
I get that. I really get it. But you got a door and a door, and you're done.
You don't need a door.
Well, there, there, there's going to be a hallway there on the first floor. Underneath will be the basement entryway to the garage. And then on the second level, there'll be the hallway from our bedroom to our children's bedrooms. It's not going to be something that you could just shut off with a wall or a door and turn into another, another house.
No, and then you got to put a set of stairs up and take you about four hours. It can be done. It's just, it's just the flow of the house. When you're putting addition, really, I'm not meaning confrontation. Something happens in your life, they sell that house. People just, that's what people doing. They're doing that right now.
Yeah, but we have no intention.
Go ahead.
With all due respect, we don't have any intention of selling our house. We want to do this addition so we can stay here for decades. I don't know what a new homeowner would do, but we don't plan on selling our home for, you know, many years. When we moved here, we had no idea what an amazing neighborhood this was, what Marymount was all about. We have no intention of leaving. And one of the reasons why we're doing this renovation is because we have two children now. We just have too much stuff. They're in sports, Cub Scouts, school. We really do.
I get it. I get it. It's nothing to do with you. This has nothing to do with you. It has to do with the design of the home. When you're putting an addition on, there's no flow. And if there's no flow, listen, I plan on being in the house my whole life. And then something comes up, I get a house I wanted and I move. That happens. I get it. It's just, and it's not you I'm worried about. I'm worried about the next occupant in that house. The way this design is, it's got two front doors. It looks like it has two front doors.
Well, but I'm not sure if it would be appropriate to deny an application because somebody may use the property in a non-compliant way in the future.
I think, I think we can when you're putting a 50% addition on your home. And it's not, there's no flow there. There's no flow for not making it what it shouldn't be.
Well, so I don't understand the lack of flow. The second floor is going to,
I'm done arguing. I'm not going to stand here all night. We all have our own opinion. Anyone from the board, any questions to the applicant?
I don't have any questions. I have a comment.
Go ahead, Charlie.
The way that I look at it, it's just too big. These are very modest-sized lots down there. Most of them are only 50 feet wide. And when I see excavation retaining walls and drainage systems being involved in an addition, to me, that's not an addition. That's like adding a completely new building to that. The other thing is, it's on this side here, the impact is heavily on the neighbors. There's two other sides there with an opening coming in off of Squanto Row, which there's no impact there except the new deck is being added. That's, those are my comments. Thank you.
Mr. Chin?
I don't have comments yet.
Mr. Redell?
I have no comments.
Who's talking? I can hear kids in the background. We just want to mute it.
Those are my kids.
Okay. We can just mute it until we come back to you. Mr. Redell?
I have no comments.
Mr. Hemmle?
It does seem like it's another house being built there. I mean, it's a nice design. It's just very large.
I don't mind. I don't mind. I mean, it could be smaller. You're right. It could come back and it could go on the other side some, but I get it. I just get it. And I know he's trying to get out of it the best he can. And so, why isn't it moved up even? Why isn't that addition kind of moved up somewhere where you could have more room in the backyard, too, but. All right, let's see what the neighbors got to say.
Marty, Council McCarthy would like to speak. He has his hand raised.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Board. Just a suggestion. I know we've gone through a few of these when there's two doors in the front. If Mr. Jacobs came back and eliminated that second door, that, you know, off the driveway and just added on to the side of the house, it might not even be out as far as he's going now. And take the breezeway out, so he just remains with one door, you know, a single entrance into the door, into the house.
But I do understand the breezeway.
And make it smaller.
The only difference between the breezeway is we got different elevations. So, he's going to go up a half-story. No, I didn't. I didn't think it was. I thought from the garage, you were going up a half, four steps or something, no?
So, we do. We go up about four or five steps currently and it would stay that way. That's the only door that we use to enter and exit the house. The actual front door that you see in front of the front porch, we never use that.
Right, right.
So, the mudroom, when you walk into that door that's sort of in the middle of the proposed structure, you walk into that door, there's going to be a mudroom there and then a laundry room right there. I mean, two young, dirty kids with sports gear just toss it in and go. That's our thing.
All right, let's hear from the public one minute. We'll get back to this.
Thank you.
Is there anyone that wants to speak in favor?
We have JD.
JD?
I apologize. I'm a representative for the McGoldy family that's a neighbor, but it's actually in opposition.
All right, I'll get back to you.
Thank you.
Well, underneath here is the garage, right? When you come in here, you got to go down to the garage or you go up four stairs to this one. I thought you came up.
All I know is if you open this door, this is on level. It's all on the same level. So, who knows where that came? That's what I'm saying.
Oh, I see what you're saying. I see what you're saying. Is there anyone that would like to speak in favor? First call? Anyone?
Not seeing any hands, Marty.
Second call? Third call. Call our party having closed. DPW?
No comment.
We have a letter here from the DPW on this case. No comment. Anyone opposed or undecided? Mr. Barry?
Thank you, Mr. Chairperson and members of the board. I'd just like to echo that I was consulted by the neighbors. The neighbors are opposed to this. They are not opposed to the Jacobs doing something in the form of an addition at their house. What their largest concern is, is the lack of really having, this is drastically going to impact them. They are the neighbor where the addition is being closer to them. They are, they live at 102 Pontiac Row. Where the addition is going to be built, there is that property line issue. There is a difference between when you look at the assessor's website and the way that that shows the lot versus what has been provided by the applicant here.
Is that, is the people you represent, you're a lawyer, correct?
Yes.
Yes. The people you represent, is part of their house on 108 Pontiac?
So, their belief is that it's not. So, the city's assessing website shows it that way. But I believe if you actually look at the survey that the applicant provided, that shows it correctly. So, it is actually a diagonal line from the,
Right, dies right before the house?
Exactly, exactly. And now, the argument, I guess, that can be made there is although the existing versus the proposed shows that in fact, like compared to the garage that was there, that there's actually going to be more distance, but in fact, the McGoldy family actually believes that that's an error and they're actually going to be closer than that freestanding one-story garage that does exist there. And more importantly,
Because of the mass, you mean? Because of the mass.
The massing is the bigger argument that they want to make, that it's not just a one-story garage. It's going to be close. It's actually going to be a two-story.
Two and a half stories, right.
Exactly. Now, I do zoning work. I usually act as the applicant. I'm not here to beat this to death. The board has made, I think, a lot of very good points that the McGoldy family wants to echo. There's been a petition that's been provided. There's been a petition that's been provided with nine signatures, all of a sudden.
I have it in front of me. I have twelve here though.
What, what I think maybe makes sense here is for the Jacobs to actually work with their neighbors and make them aware of what their plans are. And maybe everyone can work in unison where everybody can be happy with the Jacobs getting some form of an addition, but the neighbors not being impacted as drastically. I think the point that is probably the strongest here is just the size of the lot versus the size of the house that's gonna be built there. It's just, it's pretty massive compared to what's in the neighborhood.
I got it. Okay. Uh, is there anyone else opposed or undecided? Second call? Nobody? Third call? Call up, call the hearing close. You know, a couple...
Marty, just as you were ready, you had says from Rutherford and then the owner also has his hand up as well.
Uh, John Rutherford, I know you've been sworn in. Happy birthday, brother.
Thank you, my friend. Uh, that, that was a quick three count, Chairman Akins. That was like one, two...
No one's got their hand up. And if you, I thought you'd have your hand up early.
Well, I mean, it, it's, I was actually looking at the wrong case. I'm looking at twenty-five Hannah Street and this is not twenty-five Hannah Street.
The council is here and I'm trying to get him.
The point I just wanted to make was that, you know, like, when I come to these zoning meetings, it's, you know, one, when you do buy a house and you have a neighbor that does have a house that's like right on the lot line, the people who are living next door, they probably think that no one's ever gonna be able to do anything with that house because they're right on the lot line. So, um, I kind of feel bad for the people in the neighborhood because um, when things are, are right on the lot line, I kind of think when you go up, you're, you take the shadows directly away from your neighbor's yard. So because of that, um, you know,
None, they're not on the lot line. This, this building is not on the lot line. I was asking if the neighbor was on this person's property.
Oh, okay.
Opposite of what you think.
Is this house on a corner?
Yeah.
Okay, okay. So I, I was looking at the right house. Okay. So, um, I, I, I support, um, the, the neighbors. Thank you.
Yep, thank you. Anyone else? Third call? Call up, call the hearing close. Uh, I think a couple members said it. Uh, the way that, the way to do this is shrink the house a little and, uh, try to figure it out, uh, do some rearranging and, and try to figure it out. But I don't like the design the way it is because it's just you've got a three-foot, three-foot open in between two buildings, so. Uh, but also I heard two comments from two members here that it's too big. So, uh, let's listen to them. Uh, where am I here? Mr. O'Brien?
Yeah, I'll, I'll go back to the same point that I made in my comments. To me, when you excavate to put a garage in and you gotta install a drainage system and a retaining wall, that tells me that you're kind of cheating the, uh, height elevation issue because you're building a half a story underground. And, and that to me gives this the appearance of a three-story addition on a two-story house by adding the garage underground, partially underground. So I, I, it, this is no ordinary in, um, addition similar to what we ran into last week on Squonaw Road where they came off the back of the building in their own yard.
Right, right.
And that's, that's the way I feel about this here, especially noticing the, uh, excavation there. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Chin?
It's Mr. Hemel who had a, uh, comment about the size.
Oh, no, I'm just going through, I'm just going through my...
Okay, sure. I would, um, I would like to see the, uh, the neighbors work together if they can collaborate a little bit more and maybe modify this plan. I also do not want to encourage, um, this house to become a two-family at some point down the road or, you know, a, a two-person, two-parent family rental down the road. Um, in, in keeping with your point, uh, Chairman Akins. So maybe a modification to the size and to the design is, is still.
Okay, uh, Mr., where am I? Raydell? There he is.
Um, agree with the board. I, I don't, I'm not necessarily concerned about the total size. I just hate the way lays out. Like, it, it just doesn't, I know you see what you meant, Marty, by saying like it just doesn't kind of sync up. And, and that's just the way it looks like for me. It looks like two different units. It looks like, looks like two townhouses almost, you know?
And I, and I know he's not meaning that, but that's the look you got when you drive by. You're gonna have that look.
Yeah, I agree.
Uh, Mr. Hemel?
Um, I, I have to kind of mirror Charlie's comments. He, it, it seems like you're pushing the envelope by digging down a half a story and putting two above. I just think it's, those are not substantial lots in that neighborhood and this is just too large.
Okay, so, uh, Mr. Jacobs, I have to go back one spot here. I have a letter here that I'm gonna put in. Uh, they were just handed to me and I missed it. It was my fault. The clerk was on time and I wasn't. I have, uh, opposing proposal for 108 Pontiac Road. There's CBA 2135. We, the undersigned, respectfully oppose the zoning of this property. Final imaging and the proposal design did not fit in with the neighborhood. The proposed building improvement looks more like a two-family dwelling. Uh, worry is once this is approved, that will be to try to zone 108 for a two-family, which wouldn't happen. We do not see any other reason for the current property owner to have to double the amount of living space uh, or any other reason. And it's 102 Pontiac Road, 98 Pontiac Road, 98, 98, 93, 75 Pontiac, 43 Pontiac, 107 Aspen Road, 170 Somerset, 94 Pontiac, uh, 161 Somerset and 68 Pontiac Road. All the names are right here. They'll be in the file that are posted in the project. So what it looks like, Mr. Jacobs is maybe talk to your neighbors, tell them what you're gonna propose, come up with a little different proposal, something that kind of fits that neighborhood. And, uh, I just need what you need for time.
So, Mr. Chairman? Uh, just a, just a quick point. So I do want the board to know that my wife actually did speak with the McGaldies, uh, many weeks ago and explained to them what we were doing. And they expressed no objection or opposition to it. So we do feel a little bit...
I know a lot of people do that when you're in person and then then they sign a paper they don't want it. It happens here all the time.
Sure, but then nine...
You know, I didn't wanna say no to you. I felt bad saying no to you, but and I know, and if they're in favor of something like that, come up with something that maybe you get rid of one of those doors so it looks like a regular house with not two entries. Really, it looks from the street like you have two different pieces. It looks like two houses put together. You know what I mean? If you come up with a better design than that and then shrink it a little bit. I think they want you to shrink the size just a little bit.
So is there some type of, I guess, format or structure that the board would be more, uh, I guess?
I think, I think if you get rid of, you get rid of, get rid of one of those doors and move it to the side of the back, whatever you gotta do, and, and have one door like a, like one house, an entry with one door that fits the neighborhood and then just shrink it, shrink it a few feet. Give yourself nine or 10 feet in the corner instead of seven.
Yeah.
Try to make it work. I think that's what they're looking for. I know you don't, you want an addition and you wanna get the most out of it. I get it. You're gonna put the money and you wanna get the most out of it, but uh, you want it to work for everybody. So I know, I know it's hard. I know and it's frustrating. It is. Building a house is frustrating.
Well, thank you. I appreciate the time.
All right, thank you. We have a motion to, uh, what I'm gonna need for, for time? Mr. Jacobs, four weeks?
Yeah, how, is thirty days okay?
Yeah, we can do, uh,
August tenth?
The next one's August tenth. We don't really have one meeting. August tenth?
That's fine. Thank you.
Okay, and, and those plans have to be in our office at least a week ahead of time. So August third?
Okay.
Yeah, that's fine. Thank you.
Do you have a motion please, Charlie?
Mr. Chinman, regarding, regarding case 2135, Hattie and Mann group, uh, design group for a finding of variance to construct a one and a half story expansion to the left of the single-family dwelling on the premises numbered 108 Pontiac Road Quincy. I make a motion to move the case to the tenth of August.
Second it?
Thank you.
All in favor?
I'm...
All right, opposed? So moved. Further under tonight for the Counselor. Counselor, you only have, uh, the two on Winthrop left, correct?
Uh, yeah, in this one, I have, uh, just a small one that shouldn't be a problem on Edgmere.
Oh, yeah, Edgmere, that's...
But, uh, go right ahead, right ahead.
Why don't we do Edgmere? That's where now we are anyway. Wenley Kai for finding to enclose the existing front porch on a premise number sixty-two of Edgmere. Is the applicant or the representative here?
Yes, I'm here. I'm Wenley Kai.
Okay, Wenley, uh, are you an attorney?
Uh, no, I'm an owner.
You're the owner, okay. Uh, could you please, uh, Mr. Chin swear in the, swear in the owner?
It's, um, it's decided. You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth in the matter now in hearing.
Yes, I do.
You have the floor. Why don't you tell us what you wanna do?
Okay, yeah, may I share a screen probably?
Sure.
Okay. And...
Eighty-seven cents a minute.
Okay, yeah, quickly. So, uh, so this is the house actually. So it's located here. So my application is actually to, uh, this is current status is to do a front porch enclosure. So that is basically the project we'll do. This is a, uh, this is size of the front porch currently. So I will put the window on side and the storm door and the window on both sides. So enclose this front porch in order to prevent the heavy snow in your inland in the winters. So that's basically...
Just a little landing. Just a little landing to put your, uh, shoes, correct?
Yeah, that's true. Probably just walk in, not, not, not extra space, nothing more. Just, just put some like broken snows in winter.
Right, right. And there's not gonna be no, uh, heat out there or nothing, correct?
No, no plumbing, no electrical, just, just, just a space basically.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Mr. O'Brien, any questions?
Uh, no questions at this time.
Uh, Mr. Chin?
No questions.
Can you move the screen there?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay.
Uh, Mr. Chin?
I have no questions.
Uh, where am I here? Mr. Raydell? There he is.
No questions. I'm in favor.
And Mr. Hemel?
No questions. I'm in favor as well.
Okay. Is there anyone that wants to speak in favor? First call? Give a hand raise? Second call?
Not seeing anything.
Third call? Call up, call the hearing close. I got a letter here from the DPW. We reviewed the above reference project and have no comments. Uh, is there anyone opposed or undecided? First call? A flag, anything? Hand up. Second call? John, I'm going third call. First call, I'm going third call. John don't wanna go. Okay, third call itself. Uh, I guess we're all in favor. Can I have a motion please, Mr. O'Brien?
Mr. Chairman, regarding case number twenty-one dash twenty-four, Wenley Kay for finding to en- enclose the existing front porch on the premises number sixty-two Edgmere Road in Quincy. I make a motion to grant the requested finding.
Second.
Second it on, uh, voice vote, man of work?
Charlie O'Brien?
Uh, yeah.
Crystal Chin?
Yes.
John Hemel?
Yes.
Brian Redell?
Yes.
Artie Akins?
Yes.
Ralph Sat?
I'm standing here for the chairman and members.
Thank you. Uh, tonight, uh, CBA twenty-one forty-four. Uh, Margaret LaForest for varying special permanent flood plain to construct a single-family home on the premise number forty-four Winthrop. Counselor, you here?
Yes, I am, Mr. Chairman. Thank you so kindly. It seems...
You have the floor. Uh, matter of fact, I need, uh, Mr. Chin, could you swear her in please?
Yes, um, Mrs. LaForest, you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth in the matter now in hearing.
I do.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are you seeing the, uh, plans I have before you?
Yep.
Okay, great. So, um, I have, we're gonna start with forty-four Winthrop Street. And first, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to thank you as, uh, this piece of property has been within my family since the nineteen forties. And as I contemplated what direction to bring before you, you took your time, uh, to do a site visit with me as well as did Mr. Duca. I truly appreciate that. I really feel it's, it's a better project and it's really shaped the, um, the decision of this application. Forty-four Winthrop Street is a five thousand square foot lot with fifty feet of frontage. It is a by right grandfathered buildable lot. However, it has some uniqueness in that it's a corner lot and you see this Brighton Street. Most people wouldn't know Brighton Street exists in House Neck. It's more of kind of a driveway, but there are two homes at that dead end. So I'm asking for some minor relief here. And it's really, um, the front side setback because it's a corner lot requires twenty-five feet of frontage and front setback. And so we're asking for a thirteen-foot side setback on that Brighton Street side. And then we're looking to align the front setback facing Winthrop Street matching the homes along Winthrop Street. You very rarely see a twenty-five-foot setback house within the entire House Neck neighborhood. And it was really important to me to conform with that. And the other real piece of relief on this parcel is the stories. So I am not coming to you to ask for a height variance. We are going to respect the code height. However, because it is in the flood zone, um, I am asking for three stories and that will be an uninhabitable parking level on the lowest level with two habitable stories of living above. And as you see, um, you know, I know coming before this board so many times, the importance of having a nice uh, frontage facing the main street. And so we've opted to put that under garage on the side street facing Brighton Street. I have done my homework and spoken with many of the abutting neighbors. I submitted today, uh, via email to Director Duca, to Noreen and to you, Mr. Chairman, as well as uploaded to the application, um, in the online system, a butter support. And so there are a dozen abutters supporting the project. I've not heard any neighbor opposition. I've been a part of this neighborhood for, for many years. So, um, I come for you asking for that relief here with this forty-four street parcel.
All right, here, here, here's my only question. Where that line is, you're going around that garage frontage. Why, why did you even do that? Why, why is that?
Yep. So that, that's a really good point and one you and I talked about, Director Duca and I, and we really went around...
I didn't even know that existed till I saw this plan. And, and a matter of fact, guys, if you, if you're looking at that, look at fifty. The drawing's on fifty. It's not on forty-four. That drawing, he has up.
So there's an encroachment there and, um, it was actually in a...
Guys, can you hear me?
Yeah, I'm...
Okay.
If you go to fifty, you'll see, you'll see, uh...
So on, on fifty, there's an encroachment coming to the left of the existing two-car garage. And it was previously a greenhouse that was kind of dilapidated. But then I repaired it and, uh, spent some good, good money doing so to make it look better. And, um, I really went back and forth with this and we're talking to Mr. Duca. He thought it best. I, I, I kind of didn't wanna cross the two property lines, thought that would be more complicated. Uh, Mr. Duca thought it would be best to carve out three feet around it and to bring that, uh, encroachment to give that, it, it's less than seventy square feet, um, to give that seventy square, square feet from Winthrop, from fifty Winthrop rather, to forty. So that would make it about five thousand seventy square feet on forty-four Winthrop Street.
Here, here's my thing. How, how far is that exactly? There's no measurements on this to tell me what it is. Like, is it, is it four feet? Is it three feet? Is it...
Yeah, it's about seven by ten, but only three feet by ten is on the other property line. And, um, so we're going to have...
Here's what I'm saying. That house, that house is so far away from the other house anyway.
Yeah.
That if you brought that down three feet, made that whatever it is, I don't know, uh, how, how wide is that? Hundred, so it's forty-seven hundred square foot lot, right? Down three feet, go right straight across where that ends. And then you got a ten-foot setback on the side. I get it. But you're not interfering with the, how you gonna like, I mean, you're gonna put that on drawings because you gotta change them both, right?
Right.
So, uh... So, uh, I don't know, let me ask the guys what they think, I know, I know Mr. Chin does this all the time, so he'd probably say it's no big deal doing that, taking that, what is it, 21 square feet, whatever it is.
I'll tell you, I was gonna tear it down, my husband was hoping to save himself the, the legwork of doing it.
Yeah.
My, one, one thing I noticed that these are land courted.
Yeah.
So you gotta go to, if you don't do that, you have, you don't have to go to land court, but if you bust them up, and you make that little jog around there, you gotta go back to land court with that.
All right, so, so, so I'll tell my husband, he's got some more sweat equity.
Here's, why don't we move this lot line three feet down? Is that what we're saying, Charlie?
But, but he's saying it's maybe not worth going to land court.
Right, just, just take it three feet down, right?
Okay.
You want to make the lot 47 feet instead of 50?
Yeah, so it's 4,700.
You can't, it's land court, that's the problem.
Why can't you?
Because it's not a regular deed, it's, it's gotta be, you gotta pay a lot of money to get it land courted.
And it's on a certificate, not, on a certificate, not a fucking page.
It's a subdivision anyway.
Huh?
It's a subdivision anyway.
No, I don't think so, she's got a, she's got lots there that are all land courted separately, you could just build on whatever's there, but if she got a separate.
Because they're all in common somewhere down the road, those were probably together.
No, no, 44 was not in common ownership, so, um, not direct common ownership, and, and so that's why the, the 50 by, um, 100 was grandfathered, 44.
But it's been there for 100 years, so whatever.
I know, but the way, the way the land was owned within the family had different names on it.
Oh.
Yeah, so it's all fenced in, so it looks like one big parcel, but when you pull it out, so I guess, I guess I'm going to appreciate your advice, and, um, Mr. Fleming's on vacation today, or I'd have him probably here with me on this, we, we were trying to save, so, you know, short money here, trying to save the demolition, it sounds to me like it makes more sense to demolish it, demolish it and not do it.
Margaret, here's the window, we'll, we'll do what Charlie says, just leave it the way it is, write it the way you're gonna write it, get it in there, and, and we'll just, uh, see what the people think and what the, uh, board thinks.
Want to check with Russell, am I right there, Russell?
You're right, Simon, this is land courted, it's going to take you a year at least to get through land court with the change in the lines.
Forget it.
And a lot of money.
Then we'll, we'll, we'll demolish the encroachment.
There you go.
Thanks, Russell.
All right, is there anyone on the board that has a question, Charlie?
No, I'm good, thank you.
Mr. Chin?
No questions.
Uh, Mr. Ray Dell?
No questions.
Mr. Hamel?
No questions.
All right, is there anyone that would like to speak in favor? Had a petition here, I've got one name on Margaret LaFores, no, 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 no. I, uh, is, uh, in favor, we have corners 36 Winthrop, 82 Lennox, 36 Winthrop, 40 Winthrop, 99 Lennox, 99 Lennox, 88 Lennox, 81, 98 Lennox, 104 Lennox, 108 Lennox, 39 Winthrop, 258 Rock Island Road, 126 Lennox Street, 4 Winthrop Lane, 57 Winthrop Street, 45 Winthrop Street. And, uh, that was, I support Margaret LaFores' application to city in 44 and 50, uh, Winthrop.
Thank you.
Thank you, is there anyone else who wants to speak in favor, second call?
Marty, Counsel McCarthy had his hand up.
Good call, Counselor.
Yeah, thanks, uh, Mr. Chairman, though, um, Margaret and I spoke a couple of times, it's, uh, great that Margaret is, uh, pursuing to, you know, utilize, uh, the family lot and clean it up, um, as she said Brighton, um, street is, uh, you know, a, a, a small street off of Winthrop, but the lot in the back will brighten up that whole, brighten up, no, no pun intended, um, but it will brighten up that whole street down there with, with a nice house, uh, on that back lot that, um, is way back in there and clean it all up, so I'm in support.
Thank you, Counsel. Uh, last call, anyone? Call up county having closed, I have a letter here. Uh, Chairman, Board of Appeals, June 14, 2021, 44 Winthrop, case number ZB 2144, review this middle of the above reference project, our comments are as follows. One, specify how much impervious area will be increased through the development. Two, plan showing the existing site conditions, layout, utility, grading, drainage, and the construction details. Three, explain how the surface lineup will be discharged and treated. Four, installs survey monuments to delineate the public right of way, the monuments shall be set by a professional land surveyor. Five, provide dimensions and grades for paving area of all driveway entrances. Six, upon completion of this project, as build plan showing all utilities, building footprints needs to be submitted along with digital file, and elevation certificate should also be submitted with the property if it is in a flood zone, anything further, please advise. Call that party having closed, if anyone opposed or undecided? Opposed or undecided, first call? Second call, anyone?
Citizen Rota.
Citizen John, happy birthday again.
Hello again, um, I was just confused, I just want, you know, when I, um, saw the two different things, there's, this is 50 Winthrop, and 44 is, is a different property, so we're talking right now about 50 Winthrop, and on 50 Winthrop, you're trying to subdivide it and make, uh, build a house behind another house, that's what we're talking about right now?
Really, it's its own lot, they have their own lot, which I understand now, it's in different names, so she's putting this house on this lot.
Well, would that guy next door that got a gigantic lot, would he be able to do the same thing?
He owns it, they own it all.
No, I'm saying like there's a property next door that has like .59 acres, that's gigantic, I mean, that whole area.
I have no idea what's over there, and he owns what?
I mean.
I'm here for this one, John, 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 we got a long night ahead of us, I don't know what he's got, has nothing to do with tonight, so all we can talk about is 44 and 50 tonight, I'm not going to tell you I'm going to subdivide and build houses.
So, no, I mean, so, I mean, right now, I'm just saying, I'm, I'm just trying to figure out what the application is for, so there's, there's an applic, there's separate application.
For 5,000, right, this is for a 5,000 square foot lot, and want to put a house on.
Okay, okay, and it's basically, um, it's going to be behind the other house on 50?
No, it's gonna, it's gonna be in front of the other house on Brighton Street, or beside the house at 50, correct?
Okay, 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 um, okay, I just, I just want a clarification, I'm undecided, thank you.
Thank you, is there anyone else, last call, call up county having closed, any comments or anything? Any of them?
We're gonna do 44, we're gonna do 44, and then we're gonna do 40, then we're gonna do 50, right?
Yeah.
Okay. No comment, nice project, Margaret.
Thank you.
I just did, oh, I just, I just put that in. Uh, Mr. Chin, any questions?
No questions.
Mr. Ray Dell, where is he, there he is.
No questions.
How come everyone got a full screen, you got like three quarters screen?
Because he's cool.
Oh, he's on his phone, oh, that's wild, no? You on your phone?
I'm on my phone, yeah, yeah, yeah.
I'm just trying to figure this out, because why would that be different, okay, I get it.
It confuses him.
It confused me, right, I get confused easy up here.
Well, let's get back in person, Marty, come on.
That's it, that's what I'm, I'm moving for, I'm trying to move this place, let's get back in, back in action, see the people. Uh, where's Mr. Hamel, there he is, Mr. Hamel?
No questions.
Okay, uh, I'll be voting in favor, and let's get a motion, Charlie, please.
Yep. Mr. Chairman, regarding case number 21-44, Margaret LaFores for variance, a special permit floodplain to construct a single-family home on the premises numbered 44 Winthrop Street Quincy, I make a motion to grant the requested variance and special floodplain permit.
Second.
I have a roll call, vote.
Subject to the DPW condition.
Yes.
Okay.
I'm clear. Voice vote?
This is 40.
44.
44.
44.
44.
Charlie O'Brien?
Oh, yeah, okay.
Okay, Russell Chin?
Yes.
John Hamel?
Yes.
Brian Redell?
Yes.
Marty Akins?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, let's go to number 50, and then.
21-43.
21-43, Margaret, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, so the other one is 50, and is that, Mr. Chairman noted, these were originally all separate lots, in fact, this large back lot facing Brighton Street was acquired from the city, uh, back in the 50s, this is a 7,500 square foot lot, um, and we are meeting all of the setbacks here, we are looking for some relief in the front, as you see, the house is setback 25 feet, but the access, kind of that entryway steps up, is going to be within that front setback, um, again, the relief is requesting stories, we will be code compliant with the height, however, because it is flood zone, we're going to do that first floor, uninhabitable space with parking below, and two habitable floors of living above, so very minor relief, and it is also, uh, Counselor McCarthy noted, and I do appreciate his, his time working with me on this as well, it's really become this overgrown blighted lot, it was previously owned by a family member who lived to be almost 103, and, um, you know, it was great to, to maintain it, it just is so overgrown, trees are falling, it's really become a mess, and I'm, I'm quite embarrassed to even call it a blight, and, uh, you all know my, 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 uh, passion for blighted property repair, so I find myself on the receiving end of submitting a proposal here to make this improvement, but I think what you're going to see is we're going to take the worst lot in the street and make it into a beautiful lot this neighborhood can be proud of, so it's going to get issued a Brighton Street address, and, uh, to answer, you know, Assistant Rotafield's question, the other parcel beside us does not have frontage, so this is a unique parcel, is that this lot originally faced Brighton Street and has 75 foot of frontage with 100 foot depth, so there is no access, except for going through the marsh, uh, through a paper street and the marsh to these other parcels, but you've got a lot of, um, property in this neighborhood that are really undersized lots, um, and so this is just conforming in the neighborhood and really making, uh, an improvement, so I break, present that to you, thank you.
Thank you, uh, is there any, I don't have any question on that, Margaret, I, I see everything you've done on that, and it's, uh, it's going to be probably a very, very nice home in that neighborhood, that's a beautiful lot too, uh, Mr. O'Brien, any questions?
Uh, no, no questions at this time, thank you.
Mr. Chin?
I have no questions.
Mr. Ray Dell?
No question.
Mr. Hamel?
No questions.
Thank you, it's, uh, is there anyone like to speak in favor? Anyone? Same people, wait a minute, same people on this.
And I should note, the Rock Island Road isn't a neighbor here, he's a homeowner on Winthrop Street. But it's, his registered address is.
It's your cousin, it's your cousin. Everyone's related somewhere down, uh, is there anyone that wants to speak in favor? First call? Second call? I have a letter here with, I have a letter here with, uh, two, four, six, eight, nine, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17 names, the same ones as the last one, same addresses, we'll put that in, Counselor, want to say anything? You're muted, muted you did. You're up.
I'm unmuted.
You're unmuted.
I know, I, just the same thing Margaret said, it's gonna, it's really gonna do a, uh, a, a nice job on, on Brighton Street down there and, and dress the whole corner up, so, um, I'm glad it's getting done, and I know she'll work hard at it, and it'll come out, it'll be a beauty, so I'm in full support.
Thank you, Counsel, anyone else? Call up county having closed, any letters from the DPW, any comments or recommendations? Same letter? My, same letter as the last.
Yeah. Ditto.
50 Winthrop Street, ditto. Case number ZB 2143, review the middle of the above reference project, our comments are as follows, specify how much impervious area will be increased through the development. Two, plan showing the existing site conditions, layout, utility, grading, drainage, and construction details. Three, explain how the surface lineup will be discharged and treated. Four, install survey monuments to delineate the public right of way, the monuments shall be set by a professional land surveyor. Five, provide dimensions and grades for paving areas of all driveway entrances. Six, upon completion of this project, as build plan showing all utilities, building footprints needs to be submitted along with digital file, and elevation certificate shall be submitted as well, if there's anything further, please advise, call that party having closed, is there anyone opposed or undecided? Opposed or undecided, first? Second? Third, close, I'll be voting in favor, it's a good lot, it's going to be, uh. Mr. Chin?
I think I see a hand for Bonnie Ten, do I see a hand down there?
Vincent Mood? Is that, is that, I just saw it just now, Vincent, no, you know what that is, that was my, that was my cursor.
Oh, okay.
I can, I can put my hand up. Yeah. I didn't know it was me until I moved it. All right, no. Ray Dell?
Next favor.
And Mr. Hamel, comments?
Nice, nice, uh, nice addition to Winthrop and the other side street there.
Could I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, regarding case 21-43, Margaret LaFores for a variance, special permit floodplain to subdivide the two lots, and to, to subdivide the lot into two lots and construct a single-family home on a newly created lot on the premises numbered 50 Winthrop Street in Quincy, I make a motion to grant the requested variance and special permit floodplain, subject to the DPW conditions.
Second. On the motion, sand and, uh, roll call vote, Madam Court?
Charlie O'Brien?
Yep.
Russell Chin?
Yes.
John Hamel?
Yes.
Brian Redell?
Yes.
Marty Akins?
Yes.
Thank you.
Counselor Fleming, you're here for 90, 29 Grove?
Yes, that's correct.
All right, uh, case number ZB 2116, Peter Tran Manager for variance, finding to subdivide the parcel, construct a new single-family home on the vacant lot of the premise number 29 Grove Street. Counselor, you're up, let me tell you what I found out, if you want, so I went up and talked, uh, with, with, uh, city solicitor, and he says, well, Marty, whatever the DPW says he has to do, he's gonna have to do, if it's paved the whole road to get access up there, a minimum of 20 feet wide to get up there, that's what's gonna happen, so the neighbors will speak up, and whoever speaks up, if we approve that, it'll be with the DPW contingency, and, uh, the land, and the tree ordinance, because the trees were, uh, chopped down to build the house, I don't know what was, what wasn't, just whatever they say it is, it is, uh, if that does get approved, those would be the two conditions that I talked to the. So you have the floor, sir, you guys know what we did from, from the city's point of view, and, uh, was there anything, where else was he here, was someone else here, except talk to him, we, he was gonna do that anyway, you said 15 feet or something he was gonna do, correct?
He wasn't, yeah, he certainly was intending to pave, uh, uh, 12 and a half to 15 feet, uh, for access to that rare lot, abutting the, um, the private way, uh, there are questions with respect to utilities as well, um, you see it on the proposed condition site plan, you have water sewer, uh, that's going to be within that way, um, I don't know the code, uh, I'm assuming if you have that trench, uh, for those utilities, are you able to run, uh, electric as well, I don't know, I don't know the code, um, uh, but that's something, I totally understand that we're gonna have to comply with DPW, and, and what, you know, what section of it has to be paved for access, um, you know, certainly he has rights, uh, in that way to pave it and, and, you know, for access to that lot, so.
Okay, uh, so just so the board members know, if, whatever way the vote goes, if it goes under the two conditions would be the tree ordinance, or whatever trees he chopped down, and. And when I was told, I think it's twenty feet wide to have to pay all the way up to the second piece of property with a... So, a fire apparatus could pull in front of that other house if it's built. So, that's... Those were the conditions. Anyone have anything else? Because we heard the case except for the ending, right? So, Mr. O'Brien, was there anything that you had in here? I know there was a six-foot wall next door. That can't be interrupted. The guy got a wall over there.
On the left.
And supposedly cars are parking everywhere over there at night. And if that's gonna happen, I mean, the fire apparatus can't get up there, so they're gonna be towed. It has to be opened. People can't... I don't know if that lady's parking seven cars in that house. Do you know anything about that, Mr. Fleming?
No, I mean, that's certainly the idea of a private way. You're gonna have to allow for access. So, if this home is indeed built and that is paved out, this proposed home does have parking on site. And the existing home on twenty-nine Grove also has proposed parking, too.
Correct. There's three or four spots on that, correct?
Yeah.
All right. So, was there anything else, Mr. O'Brien, that you can think of before...
I can't remember. I think we were talking mostly about the private way and you probably gotta get sign-offs from the abutters, correct, to allow them to pave?
Yeah.
That's... That's one of the conditions, right?
Well, whatever... It's whatever...
No, it's not really my opinion. That's not my opinion that you have to have sign-offs from abutting neighbors.
No, but I think you would work with the neighbors to do the best you can so when it's being paved, none of their property gets touched or...
Certainly, certainly.
That guy's got his course. He's got his retaining wall over there. But what he did say at that meeting was there was a lot of cars on there. I don't know where they're coming from. Maybe it's the neighborhood, not... You're two clients. Maybe there's just people parking there. I don't know. I don't know who owns the cars. But that'll have to be dealt with with the DPW and the city. And people stop parking there when there's a street. They're gonna... They're gonna get towed. That's all.
Absolutely.
No parking, correct?
Right.
So, yeah. And Charlie, the DPW and the fire department are gonna have to work that out, whatever they want. They're gonna have to do what they want to do.
Okay.
Mr. Chin?
The question regarding the maintenance of the private way once it's done. Will there be covenants in the deed? Will there be an agreement?
We can put that in there. We can put it in there. The only reason that road's built, we can put it in there that the owner of those two properties are gonna maintain that way. They're paving it and doing that.
And the only thing I will say with respect to that, if this indeed is paved twenty feet wide to the new home that's proposed, directly across the private way is already a home there as well. You know, this is a gentleman that's complaining about what's going on next door, but he has a home in his rear yard. So, now he will also have access to that home in the rear of his lot. I think it's one parcel with two homes on it. How they access that home, I think, is from his driveway.
Yeah, they must. It's a shared driveway, yeah.
So, I think the maintenance of this way will have to be the responsibility of, you know, whoever's gonna have access, you know, through that way.
If there's three, if there's three, three of yous, someone's gonna have to pay to have the snow removed. Right.
Yeah.
All they're gonna clean up in front of each person's house, right?
That's right.
So, do you anticipate... Do you anticipate, Counsel, having some type of an agreement that gets recorded regarding the maintenance?
What is... Once it's improved, yeah, there'll probably have to be an agreement in place if achievable with those that are gonna have rights to access this new paved way. And my understanding, it's... I believe it's just the gentleman next door who has the home in the back.
I just want to be sure that, you know, that issue is taken care of if we grant the right to build over there.
You're right, Mr. Chin. You're right. Because now there's really... Mr. Chin's right. It's gonna be three people because he's selling the house up front, the sister said, where she's living and she's moving into the new house, correct?
That's my understanding.
Yeah. So, there's gonna be three different owners there then. There's gonna be the one on the left. He's gonna have the house, the new house, and the one in front's gonna be sold. So, there will be three different people. You're gonna have to deal with some sort of agreement and that's gonna have to be worked out. I don't know, Mr. Duke, could the city make sure that's all gets done?
Chin is probably gonna want some kind of a homeowners agreement yet before... Because he's... He wants... He doesn't want the city to have to be responsible.
For the private way, right.
And drainage and everything else.
Right, right. All right. So, they'll have to work that out. Did everyone get that? They're gonna have to work it out with an agreement somewhere that... Because the city's not gonna maintain it because it's private. All right, we're all set. Any questions or comments, Mr. O'Brien, before we take a vote?
No, not at this time. No, I'm good, I think.
All right. Mr. Chin?
No further questions.
Mr. Ray Dell?
I have no questions at this time.
Mr. Hamel?
No questions.
All right. Mr. O'Brien, can we have a motion, please? That's the only thing we're missing on this case.
Do we have to include the conditions or do we just let it...
Yeah. The conditions of the fire department, the DPW, the tree warden, the tree ordinance.
Okay. All right, Mr. Chairman, regarding case number...
We already all spoke. We all spoke last meeting. The only thing I was gonna do is say, I gotta talk to the city solicitor. What do you want us to do? Are they gonna make them pave the whole thing, half of it? He says DPW will make sure there's access and it'll probably be twenty-foot minimum, but that's up to the DPW and the fire department. We already took testimony, correct? Correct, so...
All right. Mr. Chairman, regarding case number twenty-one dash sixteen, Peter Tran Manager for a variance and finding to subdivide the parcel and construct a single-family home on the vacant lot on the premises number twenty-nine Grove Street. I make a motion to grant the requested variance and finding subject to the direction, the conditions established by the DPW and the tree warden and an agreement on the pavement maintenance.
And the letter of the DPW, yeah, okay. Anything else? We missing?
That's all I had was the tree.
That's good. Well, that's up to the DPW and the fire department. They're gonna tell them what they need, what they have to do. And then they gotta come up with an agreement with the people in there for maintenance and stuff, too. Should I put that in there? Come up with an agreement, maintenance?
I did.
Okay, okay.
Charlie said a pavement.
Agreement.
Maintenance agreements.
Yep, maintenance agreement, okay. Charlie's got the motion made, seconded.
I can...
Seconded, seconded on the motion, sand, none. Can I have a vote, Madam Court? Twenty-nine Grove Street.
Twenty-one sixteen, okay. Charlie O'Brien?
Ah, yes.
Russell Chin?
Yes.
John Himmel?
No.
Brian Riddell?
Yes.
Marty Akins?
Yes.
Quarter one, thank you.
All right, we're on case number ZB A twenty-one eleven, ten seconds M.A. LLC for variance finding, construct in addition to the existing fire damage commercial space for the restaurant, the premises number four-twenty-nine Hancock Street. Is the applicant or the representative here? Is the applicant or the representative here?
Hello?
Yeah?
Um, I believe the... I'm the project engineer, but I thought the attorney has asked for continuance.
Continuance?
Yeah.
Okay, when you want... You should have told me to give you this so we could have got this done. Here's my thing with this whole project. We're putting up a restaurant. Now you're adding a couple businesses and you have no parking yet. You're adding all... You should have twenty-eight spots. You have nothing. There's zero. You're adding zero. Here's what I'd say you'd like to see done. Shrink that project down and put at least ten spots in there. I mean, you gotta... You gotta put some parking there. It's just, there's no parking. Now, did you go in front of planning yet?
Well, that's what this... This asked us to do, so we are going...
No, you can't right now. We're talking, thank you. All right, I wasn't done with the last case. We had a comment. Okay, hold on one minute, please. Hold on, please, please. Let me just... Let me take care of this right now. Go ahead.
Yes. We are talking to the planning department, working on the... That we designed at this point or parking agreement somewhere else. So, I would ask to continue for thirty days if we can.
Yep. I mean, you come up with a parking agreement with them. That don't mean we're gonna agree to the parking agreement. I mean, if you say you're not gonna do any parking, it's just, you're adding too much density down there, I think. I just... That's just my opinion. I mean, you know, you're putting... No, so I'm just trying to give you a little help here. That's what I'm trying to do.
Yeah, we'll bring the message back to the owner and we'll...
You can stuff down there and put some parking in there before. So, you want thirty days. Charlie, can I get this moved thirty days? Yes. You're not gonna get the plan until at least September because they don't meet in July and they're full for August. So, you wanna go to September? September?
Okay.
All right. Charlie, meeting in September. We have a date roughly.
September one.
By the governor.
No, well, we can just pick the second or fourth and then we'll... The first and third, whatever's good for you, Madam Court. September fourteenth.
You have to do it after the day of the...
September fourteenth, Charlie.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, regarding case number...
Twenty-one eleven.
Twenty-one dash eleven, ten seconds M.A. LLC for a variance of finding to conduct, construct in addition to an existing fire damage commercial space for a restaurant use on the premises number four-twenty-nine Hancock Street. I make a motion to move the case to September fourteenth.
Seconded? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved.
Thank you.
Okay.
You're welcome. ZB A twenty-one thirty-seven, Vincent Mood for variance to rebuild the home that was destroyed before on the premises twenty-five Hannah Street. Is the applicant or the representative here? Hold on one minute with this. There's a guy on the phone, six-one-seven five-nine-six nineteen forty, had a comment for last... If you're gonna let him speak, please, Jonathan, there you go.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, sir. Name and address for record.
My name's Mark Doran. My father lives on thirty-five Grove Street.
All right.
All right, my question is, is this approved?
Yeah.
Yes, it was.
Okay. So, what do we have, thirty days to file a superior court to object to his encroachment of his half a private way?
Once the decision is typed and filed with the city clerk, you'll get notification in the mail?
You get twenty days from then.
To file a motion in court?
From the date it's filed with the city, yes.
And what's the date it's been filed?
It won't be filed till, I don't know, week? Two weeks, I gotta sign it. We all got signed, right?
Probably July, hopefully July fourteenth, but you will get a notification in the mail that it has been filed.
Okay, great.
Feel free to check with me around the fourteenth.
Yeah, you can check with the clerk somewhere, you know, second week of July so you'll know when the filed date was and you get twenty days from then.
Absolutely. It will be court motion filed on that encroachment.
Okay, okay.
All right, thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right. Vincent, you're up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Are you a counselor?
I'm the homeowner.
Okay. Mr. Chin, could you swear a man's...
Yes, Mr. Mood, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth in the matter now in hearing?
I do.
Thank you.
You have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Again, my name is Vincent Mood. I've lived in this address since, well, the seventies. I recently had a fire that took down my entire house. It's down to the foundation right now and I'm asking for a variance because my lot is very narrow and it doesn't meet the minimum requirements. I can share the screen.
You can build in the same footprint, but you don't want to do that?
Oh, I am, but building in the same footprint. I'm just making a little bit bigger house. I'm actually matching my neighbors next to me and building a full second floor.
All right, so it's gonna be a two-and-a-half-story house?
Yeah.
On the same footprint, okay.
Same footprint, nothing, nothing really changing.
You're making the house bigger, okay.
Yes.
So, it's the exact footprint, twenty-four-two by... What is it there? I can't even hardly read this thing. About fifty-one?
I believe so.
Fifty-one or fifty-three? I can't believe we got a set of plans. I can't even... This gotta stop, really. Look at this. Look what we got. This is... I got contacts in, I can't read that. Like bizarro. Anyway, so it's gonna be an exact footprint. You're gonna have two-and-a-half stories, period?
Yes.
So first floor, go through the first floor and the second floor.
Uh, alright, so here, let me um, share the screen.
No, go ahead, you just speak up.
I'm sorry. Uh, so, uh, the first floor, it's just gonna be an open floor plan, uh, with a kitchen. Uh, there'll be a one bedroom on the first floor and a bathroom. Uh, there'll be stairs to go up to the second floor. Um, oh, there'll be a deck in the back too, uh, through the, through the back. Like I said, it's gonna be pretty much all open now. Um, I'm kinda tall, so the ceilings will, the doorways will be like eight feet, I guess. I don't know if that matters. But um, and then you go up to the second floor, uh, there'll be three bedrooms up there. Two bedrooms and one master, uh, with two bathrooms. Well, one master bathroom and a regular bathroom.
So that little eye, you're gonna pull four bedrooms, okay. Alright. And then the deck, how far around, how big's that deck back there? Read this print.
12 by 15. And then, and then 20?
Where do you get those eyes? I can't read it.
There's a, the second story is 12 by 15.
Alright. I see what you're saying in the back there, yeah, alright. Okay. Wait, you just got storage up in the attic?
Uh, yeah, it's gonna be like a bonus room, but just storage, yeah.
Are you getting a bonus room? It's two and a half stories. What do you got for knee walls?
I'm sorry, what?
What do you got for knee walls?
I'm not sure what a knee wall.
On the floor?
Oh, oh, uh, yeah, it's um, it's on that print. I, I can pull it up.
Going right on the second floor, so. Now what about the, what do you got? Two dormers on each side?
One was for the stairway and I thought it would look better to have a small dormer on the other side to match it.
Oh, nice.
Yeah, there should be a big print with that.
Now, we, we didn't get it.
I'm sorry.
You only get one. Here it is, oh my God. That looks pretty good. Whoa, whoa, Steve, that is a 24, okay, you got a hot tub. Hot tub, look at this guy. Storage area, hot tubs. So what's that uh, that third floor now? So that, the dorm is for the staircase?
Yes.
Okay, I see it now.
Yeah, just a little, little dormer for the staircase to get up there and then I thought it looked weird with one.
It's been nice, it's nice to have those.
I'm sorry, I'm drastically unprepared for this.
Oh, no, no, no. Any questions any applicant? Charlie?
Nah, no, I'm good, thanks.
Russell?
No questions, Jim.
Brian?
Done.
Uh, John?
All set.
All set. Is there anyone that would like to speak in favor? Nice plans, they look nice.
No hand.
No hand. Second call? Third call, call up out of hearing, close. June 7, 2021, 25 Hannah Street, case number ZBA 2137, review the above referenced project, our comments, we have no comments. Is there anyone opposed or undecided? Opposed or undecided? First call? Second call? Got a star? Something we can, no? Third call? Call up out of hearing, close. Nice house, you got, you know, wherever it is and everything, you got a nice, nice, nice home. You're gonna make that a really nice home.
Thank you very much.
Yep, uh. Same footprint, nice, okay. Uh, Charlie, Mr. O'Brien?
Yes, no questions, I'm good. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Chin?
I am in favor.
Mr. Raydell?
I'm in favor.
And Mr. Himmel?
In favor, nice, nice little project.
Mr. O'Brien, can I have a motion, please?
Mr. Chairman. Regarding case number 21 dash 37, Vincent Mood for a variance to rebuild a home that was destroyed by a four should be fired. On the premises number four, um, on the premises number 25 Hannah Street 20, I make a motion to grant a requested variance.
Seconded? On the motion, seeing none. Madam clerk, can we get a? Voice spoke?
Charlie O'Brien?
Ah, sure.
Russell Chin?
Yes.
John Himmel?
Yes.
Craig Riddell?
Yes.
Marty Aiken?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam clerk. Uh, further on to tonight's agenda. Maybe this won't happen for once again. Uh. CBA 2137, no, the CBA 2134. JCBT Architects LLC to construct a three story addition with a third floor addition to the existing two story single family converted from a single family home to a three family home, 38 Home Street. Is the applicant or the representative here?
Yes. My name is Bonnie Tan. Representing JCBT Architect.
Are you? Are you a lawyer?
No, the architect.
Okay, Mr. Chin, could you swear in, please?
Yes, Ms. Tan, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth in the matter now in hearing?
Yes, I do.
You have the floor.
Share my screen. Uh, oh.
Oh, uh-uh.
They shared the wrong screen.
Hey, I know that house.
Did I share the right screen? Do you see the house here?
Yeah.
Yeah, we do.
Okay, yeah, is this, currently is this old house right here and it's being abandoned and surrounded by a lot of uh, multifamily uh, constructions. And it's walking distance to the uh, train station right here.
Okay.
So, we are, uh, currently it's existing two story single family and we're proposing a second story addition, a third floor addition and the wear. So let me.
I don't know. So.
Existing foot, footprint is here and we're adding the uh, rear addition here, plus a third story and converting the single family to a three family.
Where your parking needs passed?
Uh, we have three parkings outside and two indoor.
So how many are you supposed to have?
Uh, we are short by one.
No, you're supposed to have seven, correct?
Uh, yeah, correct, two. And first floor is a three bed with a fit, a playroom, partial playroom in the basement, laundry.
So each unit's three bedrooms?
Each unit's three bed, one ba, one bath. Uh, two baths, actually. Uh, second floor is divided by, is separated out two units. So the front unit has a third floor and the back unit has a third floor. So the, the second floor is kitchen, living and a bathroom and third floor is a three bed and a bath. The front and the back unit just mirror each other.
Uh, alright.
And they look much prettier than currently.
Oh, it looks beautiful, but I'll tell you, it's, it's oversized for that lot. It's, there's no, there's not enough parking there. I know people say the train's down the street. You need too many variances to make this whole thing work. It's just, it's just, it's too much. You're trying to, you know, quarter and a dime slot, I just, I have no questions. I just think that property's too big for that lot. So, I don't have any questions. Mr. O'Brien, you have any questions?
I know, I have, I have the same comment. I, a two family maybe, a three in that lot? I don't think so.
Oh, two, definitely, I would say, you're right. Two families, definitely, parking and that.
And then they, they're talking about a turning radius to get the extra two parking places in so they can make the garage, which gives me a problem.
Right, I mean, you know, it's like the proposal request to additional units, three stories with a gross living space of 4,700 square feet. You know, and then you keep going on, it's, it's 1,200, 1,500. Each, each unit contains three bedrooms. One for each, the applicant is seeking lot size with front and left side yard setbacks.
There's no room to breathe in the lot.
Variance needed for extra floor ratio, too much fire, right side sufficient setbacks, insufficient open space. And it goes on and on. It's like, it's just too big for the project. It's just, you're right, you're right. Mr. O'Brien. Mr. Chin, any comments before we get going here?
It just does look too big for the lot and I don't see any green space on my um, in my drawing. Maybe, maybe I'm mistaken.
No, you're not. Uh. Mr. Raydell?
I agree with the board, it's huge.
And Mr. Himmel?
Yeah, it's a 4,500 square foot lot. This is way too much house and I just don't see how those cars are gonna get in and out of that uh, in and out of that garage. That's just unfeasible. It, it, this, this is, it's too much.
Alright, so I think we all agree on that. I don't know if you wanna continue this and come back with a different plan or just resubmit a whole new plan or?
We'll, we'll continue.
Okay, and uh, August 10th?
August 10th.
But I need, I need a set of plans here at least a week ahead. So August 3rd, they have to be in this office.
I need uh, the next meeting, please, uh, probably.
24th? August 24th?
Yep, that'd be great.
Okay, uh, can I have a motion, Mr. O'Brien, please?
Mr. Chairman, regarding case number 21 dash 34, JCBT Architect LLC for a variance to construct a three story rear addition with a third floor addition to the existing two story single family home and convert the single family to a three family home on the premises number 38 Home Street. I make a motion to move the case to August 24th.
Seconded? Seconded on the motion, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Don't move.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, that's 38. That's it, ain't it, gentlemen?
Yes.
That's it.
Good job, guys.
Thank you very much, gentlemen.